All right, ladies and gentlemen, we stop. We're going to show it up tonight. We've got two public hearings to start the debate. We're going to let Joey take over the right here. Thank you all.
Thank you. My spot. I had a challenge on one of the noes, so I was looking for that. But I'll call now for public hearing regarding property located at 6203 Carter Street, tax parcel number 09071002024C. Norton Capital Inc. seeks a variance to allow a reduction in minimum heated floor area per unit from 1,400 square feet to 1,000 square feet. Property is owned R3 multifamily residential district. Procedure we will follow is I will call on the applicant to come forward, explain to council the basis for the request. I will then ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request? If that is a reason that you are here tonight, you have an opportunity to come forward to the podium, tell us your name and your address, and address your comments to the council, please. I will then say, is there anyone here to speak against the request or in opposition to the request? If that is a purpose for which you are here this evening, you will then have the opportunity to come forward and make your comments to council. The Georgia Code, as well as the city's ordinance permits the council to impose a time limit of 10 minutes per side for and against. We generally allow those who wish to speak for and against to speak without imposition of those time limits. But if what you have to say gets to be repetitive or if the matter's already been addressed by another speaker, then we may call that to your attention and ask you to wrap up your comments. So is the applicant here? Please come forward, sir.
Thank you very much. We have, over the last week, been talking to various neighbors. We want to continue those conversations, so I'm going to ask this issue to be tabled for 30 days to allow me to continue to talk to surrounding neighbors and listen and come up, have my land planner come up with some solutions to some parking issues and some driveway issues that have been raised. I'm trying to listen to the neighbors. Our intent is to, while it has been a historic structure for better part of 120 years there in that neighborhood, to restore it in a historical manner that is pleasing to the neighbors first. And second, that would be a strong statement for the city of Lula that they believe in preservation. I hope you will grant my request for a 30-day table. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here came tonight to speak in favor of the request?
Robert Grizzle, 6400 Airmore Way, Lula, Georgia. You know, I believe that place has been a nice one for quite a while. I think we've got a reputable developer here that'll take it to his hands and do a good job with it, turn it into a nice piece of property, be valuable to Lula.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone to speak in favor?
You also had a written statement submitted.
I've got two statements that the council should have received, as well as the applicant. Everybody should have copies of them.
Just make those part of the minutes.
Well, one is from Chris Luallan. You want me to speak to it?
Either way, you can either read it for council. If everybody has a copy, you can put it in the minutes.
Whatever suits the council. We've got another one from Jacob and Samantha Cash. You're going to be here this evening.
Is anyone else here to speak in favor? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to the request? Anyone here to speak opposed to the request? I've got two young ones coming forward. Maybe three.
My name's Emmerick Coker. I live on Tower Circle. I don't object to him remodeling and renting it out, but I object to the baritage from 1,400 to 1,000 square feet.
Thank you. Others in opposition to the request?
Robert Payton, live at 6205, right across the street from this public. I've talked to Mr. Norton, wonderful guy. But my issue is the four units, and I'm not in the understanding. I know he's wanting to put it back historical. But I've talked to him about it, and I have, I think I heard in here that you can't add to the building. And I've got paperwork where they bought it. It's 3,700 square foot, and I don't know how you're going to get 4,000 out of 37. What he's proposed is putting the driveway on the other side of my property and an eight-foot fence, and I'm okay with that. But at 1,400, what it's supposed to be, you're only going to get two. So if you put it at 1,000, he can only put three. And that's why I oppose going to 1,000, because we already have problems with the duplexes in the neighborhood having drugs. And the traffic on the road is unbelievable. And that's for this ordinance. The second stage is even worse. So that's my proposal.
I'm sorry, did you repeat that the second?
Yeah, I went through the last part.
This is just the first proposal for what he wants to do. The second proposal is for 13 more units of backside of Josh's neighborhood, I mean Josh's house. And that's if we give into this, it may go to that. He's willing to work out, give us 30 days, that's good. But I'm still at, if you're at 4,000 and you ain't got the 3,700 and you'll go back to historical, I mean, I'm not the smartest man in the world, but that don't add up. So I'm against it.
Thank you. There was one other gentleman that was coming forward. Anybody else here to speak in opposition to the request? Anybody else speak in opposition? To the applicant, anything? I'm sorry, come on up.
Quick, add on to it. Everything he said, I'm totally, I like the idea of remodeling this place. I've done work for Frank before. He does oversee good properties and takes good care of his places and puts a lot of value in restoring places like that. And I think that's a good thing. But my concern is if we go to like 1,000 foot, if it fits in the building at all, like Robert says, my concern is down the road, would that pave the way in the same zoning area, additional 1,000 foot? You know, what's to prevent it to go to 1,000-foot spaces on the 13 theoretical units on the way? And I know that's not what we're talking about, the theoretical part, but I'm concerned about population density around my property and around, obviously, all the neighbors. It's just, so I don't object to a man making money and remodeling and putting a few units. But when it's something that normally would go like in an inner city, suddenly on a back road back here, I'm against that. So I just don't want the 1,000-foot thing to pave the way for a whole bunch of 1,000-foot spaces, therefore tighter population density, I guess. If that makes any sense.
Thank you. We know you, but for our minutes, can you tell us your name and where you?
Oh, yeah, my name is Josh Peck, and I live next door to this property, the Frank's.
Thank you. Anyone else speak in opposition? Normally, give the applicant a chance for any response to the comments, but if, I gave you that opportunity.
I'm listening, and I've asked for it to be tabled.
And to council, if you choose to grant that request for it to be tabled to next month, I would ask that you specify in your motion whether you want to have a public hearing as well on June 19th, as opposed to merely table it for a decision.
Yeah, I make a motion. Do we need to wait until we have the meeting to make the motion, or can we make that now?
Joey, there's five, whatever you want.
I'm sorry. Can we make the motion now as part of the hearing?
Are you making any brand new public hearings?
Yes.
Let me ask also, did you already report, Dennis, on the folks who sent in?
On staff comments?
No, on the folks who sent in that wanted to be heard.
I can't now.
Okay.
So the two items we have, one, let's see, from Chris Luallan to the council, I'm not going to be able to make the public hearing through reduction of square footage from 1,400 heated square feet requirement to 1,000 square feet. But I'd like to go on the record supporting the variance. I think this would be a good redevelopment use of a historic building. I also think this would help offer different housing options for citizens. Everyone doesn't want to live in a house on one to two acres. I worked with two people that live in apartments that are less than 1,000 square foot. One is involved and the other is in Plarchville. Each one told me that the space they have is ideal for them and their spouses as they are each working full-time and in school. They said that they don't have time to take care of anything larger. We need more housing options in Lula. Thank you, Chris Luallan and Matt for receiving today. Another comment we have is from Jacob and Samantha Cash. This was also received today. We live at the corner of Banks and Carter Street, diagonally located from the proposed property, 6203 Carter Street. I've been made aware that some neighbors received a public notice from the city of Lula regarding this proposal. I'd like to point out that we, along with other neighbors that are located closest to the proposed property, did not receive this same notice. In 2021, we bought our home in Lula. We chose the location. We got the small-town atmosphere, a place where we could safely walk our kids to school and downtown for parades and festivals, an area that is safe for our family to enjoy and family barbecues, watch our kids play in the yard, and relax on the front court swing. Our house is historical. We are fortunate that someone took the time and care to preserve some of the home's history, and now we have a beautiful place called Home that is full of character. It is a time when everyone just wants to tear down the history of town, cities, and states. We greatly appreciate efforts to preserve the historic elements of landlord. We have no quarrels with someone remodeling 6203 Carter Street while maintaining the historical architecture. Our main concern is the potential for increased traffic on our roads, which is called rumors regarding proposals for Banks and Carter Streets to be widened. If this rumor is true, it'd be a drastic impact on my family and our quality of life. I have attached a view of my home outlined in aqua, and you can see the current proximity of the roads to our house. If the roads are widened, that impacts the size of my yard and driveway, making the road significantly closer to my home, which will have an effect on the safety of our kids, our home, and the hometown atmosphere that we have come to appreciate, enjoy, and love. Thank you, Jacob and Samantha Cash.
And to answer your question, Tommy, it is on your agenda as item 15, but if council chooses to move that item now that you've had the public hearing, you can, I will declare the public hearing closed.
You can leave it at 15.
Here's one I've got, Mr. Mayor. If you want to table the motion, you can go vote on this now. However, he can, the applicant can just vote on me.
Sure.
Are you taking the motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this variance request for 6203 Carter Street with the caveat that we also have a public hearing, I believe, that was mentioned June 19th. Did I catch that correct, June 19th? That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tommy Corin, second by Denise Shaw. And to table this to June 19th for a public hearing to be heard at that time. Are there any?
Aye.
You want to say aye? Actually, we got, you got a moment?
Yes, sir. I call now for a public hearing regarding a resolution to change the time of the regular council meeting from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM effective June 19, 2023. This is an ordinance public hearing as opposed to a zoning public hearing. Is anyone here to be heard regarding this proposed resolution?
Joey, let me clarify, is this resolution to change the regular council meeting to 6:00 from 7:00?
Yes, sir.
Or it says from 6:00 to 7:00? Well, the regular council meeting's already at 7:00.
No, it's, 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 yes, it's.
I'll read it again.
Okay, okay, okay. I misread.
All right, I'll read it again, make sure it's clear.
I'm having it.
This will be a public hearing regarding a resolution to change the time of the regular council meetings to 6:00 PM from 7:00 PM effective June 19, 2023.
Sorry.
That's right. Is anyone here to be heard regarding this proposed resolution?
Read the weight.
I'm sorry.
Forward or against it?
Either way.
Emmerick Coker, Tower Circle, I object to it. Hard for a working man to get here at 6:00. I barely didn't make it tonight.
Thank you.
Robert Grizzle, Airmore Way, I object to it. I mean, it's been 7:00. For all known history, I guess, we've been here in Lula. It seems to work fine. I'm Mr. Coker there. I mean, I can get here at 6:00 or 7:00, but I think a lot of the folks that work, and I think even sometimes the council members, have made sure and have a hard time getting here to be here at 6:00. So I think it should stay at 7:00. So people that are having to work out of the area here, which most people have to work out of this area, Downey Gainesville, even toward Atlanta, anywhere else, I think it should be left at 7:00. So those people are afforded the ability to come be at our council meetings and their voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard at this public hearing? Then I'll declare the public hearing closed, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Joey. Okay, thanks, I'm blessed to everybody here. I should thank y'all for coming. I want to give a real shout-out to people across the country that watch this online. My brother and his wife and his sister are watching. I'm sure y'all have other friends that watch it across the country. But that's, it's not just here in Lula that watches this. It's just, I don't know if it's nationally yet, I haven't made my cross, okay, it does yet, but it's watched across the country, it's not just here. And I appreciate y'all showing up, I appreciate them, all the people online watching. We have three messages of watchers in the online, wish you could get some information out. And I should have, I would be dead. Dear Lord, thank you for our duty service. Lula, help us, give us strength, courage, wisdom, make the right decisions for Lula. Thank you. My others have been monosyllical, man. I'll just stand for the page. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're having a little rough time with the sort of comments lately, so we're going to do a little. The public comment is jury comments only, not outbursts or writing and ranting. The comments should enter only to the intended items and nothing else. Comments will be two minutes long, no sharing of time, no personal attacks, there are sort of comments, keep your language clean. If you have a concern, you're not on the agenda. Contact the council or staff at head time and make a report in the right direction. If you present your concern to a committee or you contact the city hall by getting on the agenda at the next meeting. Remember, you represent Lula for the rest of the world. Since I'm beginning to strain my, make us proud. It's time for citizen comments.
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, I certainly am. I'm very disturbed this evening. I personally asked if you would come down there and talk to me. I'm looking at your agenda where it says city council meeting conduct. I think we as citizens have something to say and talk about and as to what's on their agenda. I don't think that covers all. I'm a veteran. I gave my life for this country and everybody, whether black or white, made no difference. I'm extremely disturbed and disappointed that you don't allow us coming out here to ask and talk about things what we are very much concerned about that not be on your agenda. I am surprised at you. I don't want to direct matter anything. Now, I'm just telling you how I feel as a veteran, whether it's black or white. I feel very hurt and insulted. I have things I want to know, other people want to know. But your agenda, and I want to talk to each one of the council members and the attorney, what they feel. I am extremely hurt and sad about this. If I had a way to get up and go back home right now, I would. I don't want to disturb anybody that's kind enough to bring me to these meetings. I am not going to stop coming to the meetings because you want to put a curfew on things. I don't like it. And if I have a chance, the longer day, to speak to the public, I will tell people, black, white, green, or any color, how I feel about things, okay? And that's my message.
Robert Grizzle, again, cease the pointing, Airmore Way. You know, well said, Mordecai, it's hard to follow that. I too am deeply disturbed, again, for the first time in our history of Lula. I know for the last 27, 28 years that I've been here, you know, we're trying to be silenced now. Not going to silence a community that loves its community. And I want the citizens to know, the fight for truth and justice in this council is not over. It's only just begun.
Anybody else?
Joseph Johnson. And I do find it, well, thank you, Mordecai, for what you just said, because I think that's the issue that we're dealing with, is the fact of trying to silence the citizens, as well as the citizens that have spoke out against you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. Bramlett, during the recall.
You're attacking, you're attacking.
This is absolutely not an attack, it's a statement of fact. I have five formal complaints in. One of those complaints are filed under the city's ethics ordinance.
That's not on the agenda.
It states right here, I've reached out plenty of times to try and create a conversation between between council members, the city manager, and yourself, all to be left unanswered. I found it very disturbing that you didn't mind, or you didn't want to.
You did not swear a oath to God's duty.
All right, no, all right. You did not enforce a curfew during the spectacle that happened a couple months ago. Every one of you have left my emails unanswered. That's every council member, including yourself, Mrs. Thomas. I have, you know, like, so when are we supposed to, when are we supposed to address the issues?
Oh, come on, man.
Really, Joe, that's what it's.
It says right here.
All right, what?
It says we can contact.
It says we can contact City Hall.
Right, we're not.
And get on the agenda. And yet, I have, I spoke out, and I'm just asking, when can I get a reply? When can I get a reply? So literally, I'm not going to get a response on an email, like you stayed here in your meeting conduct. I'm very respectful in my, you know.
Your time is up.
Is it?
Your time is up.
So still no answer?
Your time is up.
Okay.
You may read if you like. If things are going to be cordial the rest of the meeting, you're welcome.
Was I not cordial?
If no more outbursts, that's fine. There's no outbursts or anything like that, that's all we ask.
Anybody else? All right, next I want to attend is council comments. Follow the sideline.
Sure. I think what we just witnessed was quite concerning. When we do get into the meeting, I'll certainly make a motion that we, this is not a motion that was brought in, I don't think we do so yet. But I would make a motion that we reconsider this city council meeting conduct limiting to items on the agenda, because it sounds like the citizens really are deeply concerned, and this is their opportunity. I would make a motion that we revisit this and remove those requirements so that we don't have that kind of competition interaction. So that's my comment.
Calm down, you interrupt. I'd like to make a motion, Joe, so.
Do you want to have a motion now, I mean? I'll make a motion that we abandon it. Okay, so that's fine, we'll do it when we get into the meeting, just like I said earlier.
What can we do? Anybody else want to say anything? Go ahead.
I don't, I'm in favor of, that's above the speaker. You're cutting them out. He is wealthy, I'm staying on, we're going down there.
Well, you saw what happened when I'm out.
Yeah, you asked for your red line.
I didn't bother you, Bruce.
You acted out more than he did.
I'll say one more time. Just because you can't do something, doesn't mean that you shouldn't.
Is that just aggression? Okay, all right. If I got confirmation left in? You got anything wrong with it? Well, there's going to be a 10-minute review. We're looking, on page two, motion made by Dean Man, hoping it'll take 19. I'm going to hear it's been on 5:15, it's been taken 19. About the project, what's it, you know? I think James had to ask for an exception.
Hold the direction, can you repeat that?
Page two, motion change in the work session council meeting times. The motion would be to hold a public hearing 6:19, then 5:15, take a pick on 6:19. That's, that's.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, the head public hearing tonight, I'll be telling, what's I can say? Next month, but this on the agenda for the night, but he said, he said, he said on it. We are a lovely night. I said, I told you next month, I said, night, that's the point. Nobody. But you know, a man has got a really great. What would that change with the audio tape? Motion made by Denise Shaw, taking the car seat, takes seven minutes for the last one. I'll press a a. Motion made by the Nisha, second of Congress, yet takes seven minutes for the last month, on the second day. I'll post a note. Thank you very much. All right, go with them for six minutes. All right, it's a award winning month here. We have, uh, five. Congratulations, uh, District one, fifty-nine, fourteen, ten, street. District two, of course, have a couple of the other court. District three, sixty-seven, eight, nine, Belt and Road. District four, sixty-three, sixty-two, Mountain Parkway. And District five, it's been twenty-five, Woodside Drive. Congratulations, everybody. You did a good job, we got number next month. We'll have five for next month, too, so keep, keep on going.
We could hear you, could you repeat those, please?
Yeah. No problem. District one, fifty-nine, fourteen, ten, street. District two, fifty-four, seventy-five, Water and Court. District three, sixty-seven, fifty-nine, Belt and Road. District four, fifty-three, sixty-two, Mountain Parkway. District five, one thirty-five, Woodside Drive. Okay, now we have a fifty-three, count them out.
Get back to the agenda. Alrighty now, so, what we normally do is we discuss where we've been and how we got there. So, quickly, I'll bring up bank balances we discussed last week, those haven't changed significantly, but they're subject to, and you're going to hear me talk a little bit about, more about that tonight, because we always stress that the fourth quarter, which is where we're in right now, is a big factor, bless you.
Thank you.
So, where, bank balances remain constant, we're also going to get the opportunity in May and June to pay those bills up, so good for us. So, current conditions, where we should be about eighty-six percent of the revenue on the general fund, which would leave us about fourteen percent remaining to be collected. The good news is, we have made some adjustments, we've knocked out the ARP money of five hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars. So, in doing so, that leaves us with remaining revenue of about six percent due. So, obviously, we're going to exceed what our expectations were this year, for this fiscal year, and more than likely, that's going to be seen in lost dollars. We're not talking about slosh right now on the general fund, but those will be seen as well. So, we exceeded a lot of our expectations, as well as with franchise tax, and that's probably going to be attributed to our very conservative approach as far as revenues, and, for that matter, expenditures. So, more importantly, a common word that I always say is, doesn't matter what's brought in, what you spend, just like your household home, where we have benefited greatly from this year. The good news is, we've still got about twelve percent remaining on the general fund. Expenditures, unfortunately, will fill some of that paint. So, right now, as we sit here today, we have probably a positive cash flow around, and then an unedited amount of about two hundred thirty-four thousand. Any questions you might have on the general fund? Always nice, but it's good news. With regards to the utility fund, I remind you again, where we should be about eighty-six percent brought in on revenue with about fourteen percent remaining. We are far exceeding that amount. We made some projections early in the year that were, fortunately for us, excelled greatly. One of those is sewer tap fees. We'd actually budgeted for a hundred twenty-five thousand collections, and we brought in three hundred ninety-one. So, as not to distort that number, we backed out and only taken credit for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, even though we brought in three hundred ninety-one. You actually saw that ango in the bank balances for the sewer tap fees. The other item that we have is we've been reimbursed for some of the expenses we paid for sewer line I, an amount of four hundred forty thousand dollars. So, that's the good news, and we're finalizing that project as we speak. That leaves us a balance of about, revenue of about eight hundred eighty-seven, unaudited amount versus nine hundred twenty-eight thousand that we estimated, which leaves us only about five percent remaining. We will excel and pass that number. When we look at the expenditure side of the picture, uh, we get to pay for some of those bills that we've been talking about. And that being, the example sewer line I, as we have paid a miscellaneous expense, two hundred forty-eight thousand, that distorts the numbers a little bit as well. So, a year-to-date, unaudited amount of seven hundred forty-two thousand, so, and we still have a balance of nine hundred twenty-eight, will exceed that amount as well. Slosh collections, fortunately for us, that special local option sales tax, continue to exceed what we projected, as much as sixty-six percent. We rub over a thousand dollars over last month of collections, and let's hope that holds true even in this economy that continues to take a hit. The only other thing I wanted to talk about and go into those items as well is, well, I've got another investment policy to do, that budget development. Joey and I had talked earlier today with regards to public hearings. Joey, do you want to address that? I've got copies for everybody.
Sure. I had suggested that the budget be presented to the full council on June the fifth, but that would require a special call meeting. And the reason for that is, you have to give notice to the public the week that it's delivered to the full council. And then you have a public hearing, which we could have on the twelfth, which is your scheduled work session. And you have to have that public hearing one week before you vote on it, and that would be June the nineteenth. And as Dennis frequently reminds you, we also have to have public hearings regarding the milage rate, even though we don't impose a milage rate, because you rolled it back. But that would leave you the opportunity to have those required public hearings during that process. Shouldn't leave you enough time for the nineteenth. But that wouldn't require you all to need just to receive the budget from staff on June the fifth.
So, we're going to need a special meeting for June.
Well, Mayor, the answer is yes, you don't necessarily have to have it on the fifth, but because of the schedule, we have to have more than two meetings to address this item. And since today is the last regular meeting scheduled, we'll have to have a total of three meetings between now and when you adopt any budget.
So, we need a, we need a special meeting proposed for June fifth to satisfy that date of being able to have a public hearing on the twelfth, June, and then also the June nineteenth presentation, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that was my suggestion, now that we should get the ball rolling.
Do you have a plan to make?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and have a special meeting for the purpose of budget presentation council on June fifth to allow for the subsequent public hearings to occur on the June twelfth and June nineteenth.
I'll second that.
Well, you may, but tell me, say one of these.
Do we have a...
Mr. Mayor, if you address the time, it's been requested in the past that we have one daytime hour, as well as, if we're going to do three altogether.
For the twelfth and the nineteenth?
Whatever.
Well, the nineteenth would be...
Whatever's the pleasure of the council.
Yeah, well, wouldn't it be, uh...
Public hearings.
The budget public hearing will need to be after six, so that will be on the twelfth. The two that, the other two that Dennis normally holds to make sure we meet all requirements associated with milage rate, usually one of those is scheduled for sometime other than in the evening. And I haven't really been addressed when, when those other two public hearings are to be held.
Are you talking about the June the fifth one?
June the fifth would be fine.
Would need to be early, is that what we're saying?
Does that necessarily have to be? Because that's just to present the budget to you, and under the law, once that's presented to you, it's also released to the public that same week. And then that way, the draft budget is available so that you can get some meaningful comments when you have your public hearing on the twelfth. But that hearing on the twelfth cannot begin until after six. So, starting the meeting at six will accomplish that purpose on the twelfth.
Would five P M. on June fifth constitute daytime? Or should that be done earlier prior to five o'clock?
That'll be fine, you can, you go to five, because that one's really not even going to be a public hearing.
Dennis, Dennis, do you have a preference?
Whatever y'all's preference.
Okay. All right, yeah, we can do five o'clock, because we also have, well, no, that's fine, yeah, five o'clock. We don't, we don't have to have committee meetings or anything, we're not under that constraint at this point. So, we could do five P M. So, I'll make the motion again that we meet at five P M. for the council presentation of budget on June fifth at five P M., giving us consideration for time requirement for the subsequent public hearing on June twelfth. At six P M., and then the, the...
Adoption.
The adoption on June nineteenth, thank you, Joseph.
Five, six, seven.
Five, six, and seven.
All right, anybody understand the motion?
Yeah, I was still saying, I was still saying.
I'll post a, ah.
Aye.
I'll post a no.
Did we get that right?
Yeah, you did, and there will be two others, and this will have two during the, at least one of those will be during the day where citizens can come in and comment at that time as well.
Okay.
The other item that we have, just as a relation to what we spend, I reminded the finance committee this other day, and just like I referenced earlier. So, if you don't, if you ever wonder how quickly the air goes out of the balloon, pay a thirty thousand dollar premium on your liability insurance. And I use that as an example, another twenty-six thousand on the striking him, if they might get done there.
We check on you.
Who knows, they're supposed to give me a number, supposed to give me a date, we argued within the date. Interestingly enough, the good news is, as I mentioned, sewer line I, and we're exhausting that loan for a full amount of point ninety-seven percent. And that's a good thing, and as you know, that came in under budget about a hundred seventy-five thousand, and that'll be a similar amount that we'll actually spend. What, chief of one refi, we had some obligations with that as well. So, that's a good thing, just going to remind everybody, the dollars go out quickly. The other thing I wanted to point out, too, was the investment policy. So, we've talked about, there's some excellent rates out there for short-term amounts. So, what we would like to do is, we've got some options available to us that we can do with online banking. Kind of scares everybody, probably a little bit scared of middle of it. Joey's reviewed that to some extent, we've got investment policy to do. We're actually trying to work with our existing banks, because we have competitive rates, and we have yet to be successful with that. And that's surprising, is it not, should be surprising, as much money as we care of the bank. So, we'll keep you apprised of that as that goes forward on that particular item. That's all I have with regards to finance, in case somebody has something. For me, you'll begin to see, finance committee will begin to see a draft, a working draft that you'll see of the general fund and water and sewer utility fund. So, it's not like we're going to spring that on everybody all at one time. That's going to be in flux, so more than likely, you'll see that in the coming days.
Anybody else?
All right, so water, so give me a second, get all the good stuff in front of me. Yeah, I definitely do, didn't think that, sorry, didn't. So, here's some good news. I get talked about this once a year, but we actually do it four times a year. When I mention fish kill, does anybody know what I'm talking about? Some people have been here for a while. Watershed protection plan or annual progress report is actually part of our apartment requirements that we actually test some of the tributaries in our particular area. Some are in the Okon Basin, some are in Chattahoochee Basin. And then, so we do, four times a year, we do a wet and dry inventory of those tributaries. And the, this report right here, and, Tommy, I just realized I didn't send it to you, I know why you didn't manage to get any sleep. But anyway, we'll send that out. But nonetheless, this year's report is complete. We're actually in a third, or a second, we're going into our second year contract with Fox Environmental. So, what they actually do is, is we go out and we check that the nutrients within creek make up itself in dry weather and wet weather, and then they also do an inventory of what live beings would be found in that creek, whether it be microorganisms or dead. That's why I always tease about the fish kill. But anyway, great pictures, fun to look at. And the good news is for us, is our numbers within, this is what disturbs me about this particular report, not a single sample area is within municipal boundaries of the city. And we're lucky that we do a good job maintaining our creeks and all have you. But in the event that we were found to have some areas of concern, we have no jurisdiction of them. That's an interesting position to be put in. But, good news is, we're there. So, we talked with the utility committee about a water line extension up on Belton Bridge that would extend all the way to three sixty-five from the existing water line. What's been proposed is, Rett McDuff would have the opportunity to send with regards to seventy-five hundred dollars. And they would do the design on that, we would begin to get an understanding of the cost of construction and inspection. So, that being said, we would ask the council, through the utility committee's recommendation, that they go forward with an amount not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars for the design of the Belton Bridge water line extension, which is right at about seven hundred eighty feet.
Do you want a motion on that?
Yes, I do.
I'm making a motion to do it.
Motion by regards to, pardon, the design of...
What am I saying?
...Belt and Road, yes, I do. Motion by regards, segment two, Bramlett, I'll post a, ah.
Aye.
I'll post a note.
Provide also that we've got bids out for Chattahoochee tank, and we've also got color work being done, as well as rate plan improvements. So, those are all things you get to hear me talk more about later on. Does anybody got any questions on water and sewer, like, to address this here?
I guess, the low-income house water assistance program. I'm not sure what we need to do about that, you print out that thing?
Oh, yeah, I had it, so.
How do you print it?
I mentioned to the council previously, we've actually addressed this two other times, Joey commented on it. I think the council actually took a position not to approve it previously, but here's what the policy does. It's brought about for low-income households and assistance program, and that's brought about by the state of Georgia, very similar to the A R B money that was available to us. So, D-Fax actually makes that money available. For us, we can do whatever, you know, the drive of the council would be. However, you need to understand there's some expectations in those documents, and Joey, you may want to speak to that as well. We feel like it would take a minimum of opening up another banking fund, if not two. One to receive the money and one to disperse the money back into our utility fund. And then with that, become audit requirements. So, you know, the question is, is that something that the council feels would serve the community overall? And if so, you just need to direct us in that direction. Joey, do you want to speak to that?
Well, it was, I appreciate staff pulling that together, because it was some unknown cost with it when we looked at it some time ago, and we were unable to nail down those costs. But there would be some accounting audit requirements associated with the use of the fund. And as I understood it from the city, this had not been an issue in the past. We had not had difficulty with folks being able to pay their bill or not being able to, under your current policy, come to the city and address those matters that would that need to be addressed.
This is kind of brought up by a constituent we spoke, I want to address one more time. To that, I, I can, what you want to do about this? Do you want, about the policy or... Do you want, about the policy or?
Not.
Is it the understanding that this would require additional staff to?
I don't think required. It, it will take some monitoring on our part. From what we understand about the program is they can give us a bulk amount of money to cover for a particular account. Above and beyond what their actual bill would be, so we would draw down against that. That's why, one reason why you want separate fund to keep track of that money. And then in the event that that account closed, we'd also be responsible for either identifying that money and sending it back to them or retaining that money for a new customer not to be, to be named later. That's the part that worries me a little bit. And so this is, A R P money is actually originates as federal dollars. Although we wouldn't meet the federal dollar threshold, I could easily see if we don't do an excellent job or if they just chose to do an audit, a random audit, we could certainly find ourselves between a rock and a hard spot. It concerns me a little bit, we'll put it that way.
And my best guess is that maybe 30 households would qualify for it.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with qualifications.
I think 150% of probably level, probably level or less is what you have to qualify as per household. I think it's less than 150% probably, which is around 30,000 dollars a year per household to qualify for this.
I think the program administrators may not have provided enough information for us to be able to make a decision.
They gave us 19 pages.
19 pages.
Lord knows anything.
It certainly leaves a lot of questions.
Well, it's not for us to decide who's probably under B. Facts who qualifies. The challenge that we would have is.
The administration, yeah.
So we would have to pay for additional audit.
We should, I'm not saying we would.
There's a possibility that we would.
Well, I can assure you, if we have two separate bank funds, one to receive the money and one to disperse the money back to ourselves ironically. You probably do want, it could be a minor amount for an audit trail on that. When I say minor, your annual audit, we would just include that as well, there would probably be an additional expense for it. Versus an independent separate order that they could order for us.
Plus, there's no benefit to the city if they do it against us. Carson.
I think we need a legal law. I'm making a motion legal law.
With my guard Smith, segment D. Bennett, does not. Set of low-income household water assistance program here in this town, all voters say aye.
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 All voters say no.
Catch up with you for just a second.
Now, peace blocks.
I'll let Joey speak to that now, but go ahead.
You, let me make sure it's clear that y'all approved what was sent to the city last month. Because we understood that they needed it by the 25th. They've made some modifications that we have gone through today. Frankly, they don't appear to be very significant as it relates to Lula, but I would request that it. We, I'd like some more time, make sure y'all have a chance to review it and.
I have another meeting scheduled with the county on Wednesday now, so there's still something to more changes.
And what's their deadline, I forget this.
Well, if you remember, it was, let's see.
April 25th.
April 25th. But, you know, and then you and I met with county as well with the joint meeting, so apparently that's a moving target. But, you know, right now, I copied, everybody should have a copy in your box of the latest and greatest.
But to get, to get on the ballot, for the paper, they've got certain deadlines.
Right.
July is when the board of elections set their deadline because they've got to coordinate then with the board of elections to have their meeting to put it on the ballot.
So we got, we got time to read this new version?
Nobody told us that, but as, when it was mentioned to me, I said, well, Lula already approved what you sent.
They sent, they sent us a news and now, okay, those are, so now we got time now to look at it. Yes, I guess we need to bring this up next time?
Yes, I'd recommend that. And if we need to have the board session as a voting session in June, we can look at doing that. And I think we just talked about on the budget, y'all having a meeting on June the 5th just to receive that. So if it gets to be a push, then you have some meetings coming up.
Was, actually, we could, I should do this on a regular meeting next month.
Depends on their deadline.
You'll find out one by the end.
I'll find out before Wednesday at 3:00.
So we're going to table that for the first, further information.
Do we need a motion on that? Do we need?
We did about, yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I make a motion, we table discussion for the proposed I G. A. for referendum on peace blocks until March, June, at one of our regularly scheduled sessions, whether it be the 12th or even the 19th, giving us enough time to review any changes that the county have to bring to us.
Do you want to play the 20 coordinates? Everybody please, Johnny, to revisit this next month, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All voters say no. Okay, resolution to change the town, your regular customers to begin at 6:00 P M. from 7:00 P M. We're looking forward to hearing tonight. I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'm going to make a motion to leave it at 7:00.
I swear I have a motion.
Motion by Denise Shopp to leave at 7:00, segment D. Bennett, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All voters say no. 7:00 P M. it is. Okay, Waters Park Fountain.
So the V. F. D. Tribe replacement, I, I would let y'all know, we went ahead and we've all ordered that. The reason I continue to bring it up is because unfortunately, it's not a stock item, so we probably got about at least three more weeks before we can put that back in place and get the fountain open. And I promise you, if it had hit 90 yesterday, the phone would have already been ringing today. When's the fountain open?
He hit it, he hit it now. I don't want to piss it in now.
How long do you think it will?
Like I said, three. We ordered it two weeks ago, so they said five to six weeks.
Relief is on the way.
Oh, a little hardware is here.
Yes.
Okay, number nine, we have Henry sort of committee thing. More than one thing.
So a couple of those items we talked about, it's only item A, we're talking about personal leave amendment and scheduled meeting for Henry. We've talked about that, say, personal leave amendment was going to be considered as part of the budget, so y'all would have a chance to view that straight up. And then the hiring incentive was the one that I copied y'all on today, a proposal from what y'all had expressed, or the numbers can change. So if the council want to take your comment tonight on the hiring incentive for existing employees to bring in new applicants. And I understood that to be $600 for the new, for the submitting employee. And if they're successful after six months, the new employee would also receive a bonus of 500. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm going to make a motion that we do the hiring incentive with the employee receiving a $600 check after the new hire has worked 130 days, about 5200 hours. And the new employee will receive the $500 check after working us out of that.
I second that motion.
5200 hours.
That's, it equates to 26 weeks and 40 hours a week.
5200 bucks?
I can do math for it.
2080 weeks.
That's 40 hours, that's 40 hours a week, that's.
2080, yeah. Yeah, so it is, I think would make me.
Add half of that possibly, all right. Less than half a month.
1,040.
1, 1,040.
That's 130 days.
Hey, we've got a whole mountain yard. 5200, we'll make it work. That's it, so, all right, so, so that's the motion.
80 hours.
We'll change that 5200 to 1040.
Yeah, I know, we do it now, 140.
Yeah. Okay, that's a motion made by Denise.
Yes.
To accept a penalty at a, at a written 130 days, about 8, about 40 hours. Once a new employee completes that, the current employee is 600 dollars. And the new employee is 500 dollars. Okay, have a second to that?
I'll, I'll say it to Jean.
Have a second by Jean, all voters, uh, uh, I'm behind the scene, say aye.
Aye.
All voters say no. That was a tough one, huh? Okay.
Item B would be an item, again, you'll get the opportunity to speak to directly in the budget. Item C, just proposed, and I sent this out to everybody, and it looks like the 22nd. So we just need to nail down the time. That evening.
Because it's five.
We did, I didn't know Denise, you were available at 5:00.
That should be, normally I'm off on that, Denise, so if not, I hope except for that policy.
So we'll be copying y'all with the resumes in your boxes.
Okay, item number 10.
So two things are coming up, we brought this up last week. We've only been successful in obtaining one bid to recondition the existing tennis court at the cost of $9,750 for the company by the name of Southeastern Tennis Courts. So what they're proposing is total cost resurfacing a premium repair option is, hold on just a second, so I don't mistake myself here. A five-year warranty against treaty cracks recurring is included. So basically, you know, five years is going to have, you could have opportunity to resurface. I know that particular tennis court hasn't been resurfaced since in my tenure here. So if they do a good job, hopefully that will be the best.
I would like to see if we couldn't have the pickleball lines also painted.
I can do that. I can do that.
For those that, that's the new thing, I don't know what pickleball is. I'll play it, but I know that's the new thing, that's the.
I will find out.
If we can't have those lines also painted, so it would be versatile and would be for tennis and pickleball for those that.
I will find out if that's available to us.
Did they, did they include striping, you know, the markings in that original figure, the 9, 9,750?
Yeah, so the pressure washing tennis courts, clean tennis courts as necessary preparation, resurfacing fill cracks. It's actually the premium on that. Apply one coat of black acrylic resurfacer, apply multiple coats, quotes, a full acrylic plain surface. Stripe one regulation tennis court using two coats of texturized white line paint. Paint the existing net supposed to install, one new tennis net with center stripe and clean worksite thoroughly. So I would have to get whatever the additional cost would be for striping for pickleball.
You said it did include the tennis net?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if they include the, you said.
I'm sure there's going to be an additional cost, that's the way we've seen them marked. Instead of using a straight line, they use a broken line for the pickleball side.
I'm not even thinking how that works, I just know that that's the new fad, and so if we could make it where it's good for both, that would be nice.
Time to do it.
I'm actually going to try pickleball, but this time we get that.
I hear it's fun, let me know how it works.
So this bid will die if we don't prove, if we can approve the amount today and I can get you an additional amount. I just want to get it scheduled because this is our problem. But, you know, I know what the pickleball would cost, I do know that this is at a, at a point of expiration. And they may go ahead and honor it, you know, there's a problem.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve it.
I swear.
Motion made by guard Smith, segment D. Bennett, to approve the resurfacing of tennis court for 9750 dollars, uh, 9700 fifty dollars. No, 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 no. 9750, now. That's for the tennis court only, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All voters say no.
Got to be the price on it, brother. Oh, I, I'll let everybody know as soon as I can get. And bring it back to it. I will, with the idea that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
Waters Park sign.
I'll, I'll say, on this pickleball, then, could we not go ahead and start with the maximum amount before you can go ahead and, so, tell, order, get over here?
Amen, brother.
Uh, what's the line, um, for the painting?
They don't have, they didn't.
Say, 10, we say 10-2, and say, amount not to exceed 10,200. That gives them additional. Yeah, if they can't do it, then they don't have to, they don't have to comply.
Y'all, y'all go ahead and phrase one of you, comes in on 150 bucks, they'll go ahead and do the pickleball, give it up, and just leave it at tennis court, is it?
Yes, yes, you, you want me to restate it? I mean, I can, I can restate it, I mean, who, who was it that made the motion? Is it you, Gordon?
I did.
Okay, do, do you want to restate it?
No, just calling you.
Okay, so we're making a motion to go ahead and have the tennis courts resurfaced with, as, as proposed with the addition of additional pickleball striping for an amount not to exceed 10,200. That gives them 450 dollars if they can, can get that done within that.
Okay, now then. Do we get some second today?
I swear.
Now then, we'll go, redo the tennis court and add pickleball up to 10,200, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All voters say no. Waters Park.
I have a proposal of $2,827 to redo the Waters Park sign, which has lasted us about, gosh, I don't know, eight years.
Everybody?
Let me. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and update.
Okay, we have a motion, I mean, do we have a motion to hear anyone from the floor? Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to hear him from the floor.
I'll second that motion.
Dennis, are we going to use the same silhouettes that we had, ma'am?
Yes.
I made those.
Yes, that's, we actually took those out of the price.
I've got the, okay, I was, I've got the design, so.
No, we, and you actually made a section, you may not remember that, the silhouettes. I've got a whole another set of them. See, your memory is failing.
I was going to say, I have that design, so we can get it to Waters to make the sign.
We're going to offer them the, like I said, you did actually make a section. You're a good guy.
Thank you.
How long ago was that marked, was that eight years ago?
Been a while.
Okay, what we get to?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and update the sign at a cost of $2,827.
So for the new shop, do you have like the Waters Park sign, give a second?
Second.
Second, all voters say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We had a young lady by the name of Misty Jackson who made a request that I copied the council. She'd like to use the ball fields on July 8th from 4 to 9 P M. Playing a game of kickball, grilling out, shooting off fireworks, might be a concern of the council, if permitted. And we request access to the restrooms as well. And we request access to the restrooms as well, approach the gathering. Uh, gathering is for fellowship of friends and family veterans, I know all y'all already read this, anyway, they estimate fifty to seventy-five people.
Um, should there be a permit for fireworks being, in
I would not recommend, meaning we haven't adopted a ordinance.
I didn't know, both counties.
They do, we don't.
Okay, I just.
The fire department should be involved in that also.
It's very particular about how a firework ordinance should work. You're right. And it does include having them, you know, several cities, and when that initially was passed by state law, adopted some programs, only to have to go back and revisit them numerous times. Is that right, Dylan?
Yes, sir.
I just didn't know if we had a
No, we have not.
Thing for
We used to have, probably, ours.
Years and years ago, but they changed the law about, I think about four years ago, is that right?
Yeah, somewhere there. And then changed it again.
They've learned a lot.
So now we can
I, I make a motion that we allow her to use the ball field in case to be used.
With the exception of fireworks?
I mean, I just, they said there was no ordinance on fireworks, I was just, that's gonna be.
So without an ordinance, she would probably have to deny her, uh, fireworks, right?
Without one, we have to deny, is that what you're saying?
I would be concerned with that for a lot of it.
Okay. Without the use of the fireworks.
Send your, send your motion.
Okay, now my motion is to approve without the use of fireworks.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, all right, let me start all over. It's been a rough time for this, and I'd like to make a motion that we allow her to use the ball field without the use of fireworks, and that we would take a refundable fifty-dollar deposit. Good, the restrooms are left and good in order.
Okay. Give a second?
I'll serve it.
Okay. My, my question by Denise Shoffley, in second by Tony, to allow Mr. Jackson and friends to use the ball field on Saturday, July eighth, four to nine P M. Without fireworks, with access to the restrooms, and a fifty-dollar deposit, refundable, with restrooms left playing. All opposed, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Okay, through this side.
Council had budgeted an amount of five thousand dollars for cemetery work. And, uh, the idea was, we talked about finance about that. It was, uh, ten thousand, increase that dollar about ten thousand dollars for installed, uh, sod. The problem that we've had with that, had we known it was, uh, just wet winter, it'd certainly come to you a lot sooner. But nonetheless, the price of sod just continues to escalate. This will only begin to do what needs to be done down there with sod, but it's not complete effort. The idea being is that we then roll more dollars into the next fiscal year budget as well.
Was this, uh, the, the ten thousand, was that, I, I think we had discussed the, there were three sections, I believe?
Right.
If the ten thousand to cover one of those three sections, is that what you require? I, I make a motion that we, you know, accept the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars on the sod, uh, cemetery sod installation process, um, to accommodate one of those, uh, sections with the anticipation, well, I'll just, I'll just leave that motion with that to, to cover for, because we know, we want to continue, just as Dennis said, to fund that, uh, for the future, future budget year.
Start with, start with that.
I'll serve that motion.
Motion made by Tony Corbett, approved by, taken by Garnett Smith to install cemetery sod in part of cemetery. All opposed, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? All right, A Ds.
So change that to three? Uh, should have changed the dollar, but it has changed to three, if you remember, City Hall, depot, and the waste tree plant was proposed. There were also a fourth addition of the ball fields. From our perspective, the only problem with adding one of the ball fields would be, uh, the security of that item.
Was access to?
Right.
I, I make a motion that we, you know, extend that to, uh, the A Ds, purchase of three A Ds. One for this room, uh, here at City Hall, the, the second over at the depot, and the third one, which was, uh, wastewater tree plant. Um, we know that those are secure locations, uh, with the amount not to exceed, I believe, seventy-two hundred.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
What is he?
Sixteen, sixteen hundred.
That's for all three.
Oh, the forty, oh, okay.
No, forty-eight hundred was right.
Oh, okay. So the purchase of three A Ds, not to exceed forty-eight hundred.
That is seven?
Mass.
I'm dyslexic, so y'all.
Motion made by Tony, to say by Garnett Smith to purchase three A Ds, as stated, all opposed, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Or is it?
Cory, did you say?
Here.
All right. So this is the I B C. It's been proposed, and first we're gonna recognize Tony went to Great Lake in trouble, now he probably realizes that Great Lake is in trouble, I think, on this thing. So, and with that, the planning and zoning committee got together and they talked. I'm gonna speak to what they spoke to, I'll try to do a good job of that. And, so Tony gets a lot of credit for this, because he actually, as you know, has been quite vocal, which is encouraged, not discouraged, but he also took the time to work on a draft. So, um, right away, I'm gonna direct you to items that have changed. As I, I remember, they proposed, item four was a new proposal that we suggested, uh, versus item three, and that would be building permits shall be for a period of one year slash twelve months. The rationale with the committee was, on that figure, items are void, we're gonna find more of them as we go down, is that's a budgetary item. So when we budget for the inspection through the year, and we collect the dollars, they never quite match up. So you'll always have a little bit falling over on what happened. But, all the same, uh, in this actual document, it does mention, in order to keep a building permit active, work has to be done within six months, separate from what we're saying. So that would be the one new item that they proposed. Let me see if I can find all this. Jump over anything. I'm gonna have to refer back to the first page, keep going back and forth. Let's go ahead and talk about, if we can, section R one oh five. Uh, required work exempt from permit, one oh five point two. And Tony, I'm gonna tell you, I remember the conversation, the committee said they wanted to speak to it, but you had proposed on building number one, other than storm shelter, was originally a raid, it ran, it stated two hundred square feet. You had suggested an amount, I believe, a hundred and twenty, and they agreed with that. They defined a floor area, a one-story floor to be twelve-foot floor to ceiling. And you had added, will not require utilities such as electricity or plumbing. And examples, Tony also offered, were examples meeting the criteria included, but not limited to pet shelters or to other small structures, not serving as a means of storage. Those accessory structures not meeting criteria will require a permit, but buildings still have to meet setbacks as required by some. That was the one thing they added to that. You want me to go ahead with the changes, or do we want to stop on that?
That change is fine, the, the way it reads here, you know, uh, just as you stated, you know, not to exceed a hundred and twenty square foot, yes. Uh, not to exceed twelve-foot floor to ceiling, I know that was an addition, that's, that's fine as well. Uh, the definition is fine, uh, and then, uh, you know, buildings still have to meet setbacks as required by zoning. But if it meets these other criteria that's listed, you know, that, that particular structure would not be requiring a permit. Because it's not, uh, being used as storage at the time.
I may have to go to my desk, and I'm pulling two, because, Lord, we got too many copies of them, give me just a second. It's right on top of my desk. I wanna make sure I'm working for, on their comments as well. Whoever said we're not thorough is wrong, because we have been thorough. Let me turn over here, see. The one item, uh, Tony number ten was struck, was proposed to be struck in its entirety, and that was the item that read, decks not exceeding two hundred feet, in an area of not more than thirty inches above grade at any point or attached to the dwelling, or do not serve exit door required by section R three eleven dot four.
So you want to, the, the way this ordinance reads now is, if absolutely require a permit for any deck that's freestanding, period, whether it serves ingress, egress, at all, whether it means it's in the middle of the yard, this is, uh, requiring a, a detached deck to be permitted, is that correct?
I think it said, recommended to be.
Yeah, it was struck in entirety. Uh, so this, remember the statement said, permit shall not be required for, so any deck, and, and Tony's right. Uh, from what the committee said, their recommendation was that all decks would be required to be permitted, regardless of square footage, regardless of the height. Is that not correct?
That's correct, the reason why that is, safety. You get outside with a hundred people on the deck, and it falls, and it's not built properly, somebody's gonna get hurt, somebody's gonna get slew.
How many inches is that off the ground?
They said any length, any height, any depth, or any.
Oh, no, I just, I know that, uh, what was stricken was less than thirty inches, thirty inches or less.
You give somebody, not ten, a little shortcut, and somebody's gonna get hurt.
What other changes were made? Did we, did we talk about the verbiage on the, uh, appeals?
Uh, so Jody's gonna address that at a later date, because that's gonna need some work on it, and I'm not, I'm not putting words in his mouth. So, uh, but we know that the expertise would have to come outside of the council. Hold on just a second, let me make sure we got other items in here. Amazing, we have so many copies of these, but it's not a bad thing, I don't understand. So temporary, section R one oh seven, temporary structures and uses. Tony, I believe you proposed that entire to be struck in its entirety?
Yeah, that was in keeping with, uh, what was requested originally when I received it, obviously.
Right.
From last year.
So the position of the committee, and y'all want to speak to this instead of making me the bad guy, was, uh, there was no difference between a temporary structure and a permanent structure as far as meeting code. That's what my notes said, is that correct?
Correct.
What are we talking about here?
Section.
Temporary structures and uses.
Yeah, I agree with, you know, section, section R one oh seven regarding temporary structures, you can leave that in, that was, would have been my recommendation anyway. Not sure why it was ever taken out. I think there was a discrepancy over definitions, and I know Robert Grissel was one, I don't think you see him in the room, but he was one that did step up and advise everyone in council what, what constituted a temporary structure, such as a construction trailer, so thank you for that.
The other section was R one eleven, service utilities one oh one. R eleven, uh, dot three, authority to disconnect service utilities, uh, was proposed, I think, Tony, you proposed that one to be struck. And they suggested that would be, uh, would go forward. Building officials had the opportunity. The authority to authorize disconnection of utility service to a building, structure, system regulated by the code. And then reference codes and standards set forth in section R one oh two dot four, in case of emergency where necessary, to eliminate an immediate hazard of life or property, or where such utility connection has been made without approval required to section R one eleven dot one, or R eleven, R one eleven dot two, the building officials should notify the service utility, and where possible, owner of the owner's agent and occupant of the building, structure, or service, other decision to disconnect prior to taking such action, if not notified prior to disconnection. Owners of the owners, authorized agent or occupant of the building, structure, or service system shall be notified in writing as soon as the practical.
No issues with that, huh?
I think the only other item that, uh, remains was the fine or fee amount, so we reflected where an amount, uh, would be recognized as a fine, and you want to speak, y'all want to speak to that dollar amount? I think, Tony, you had suggested originally, early in the conversation, about an amount at times, depending on the application, I think it's two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars, is that right?
Uh, yes, the, the, uh, original amount that was listed and received was, uh, five hundred dollars.
Right.
Uh, plus
That's the one item, probably, although I think the committee came back to five hundred dollars. That's the one additional item that, so that would not be recognized as a fee, it would be recognized as a fine, and that fine could only be applied if the citation was issued, with the exception of the stop work order, where, again, the citation will be issued there for a fine up to five hundred dollars, is what I've been told. Is that correct? To the committee?
Yeah.
So those were
It's up to five hundred?
It would be, but it would be recognized as a fine rather than a fee.
Which means it could be less, were you saying up to?
Yes.
So that's a, for inspections, that's a fine up to five hundred dollars for each inspection that was failed to be obtained, so there could be multiple. Uh, violations, uh, the section for violations, any person or permitted project who fails to follow the code will be subject to a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars per violation. Or if the demand is not corrected within seven days, fair enough. Stop work order, this is the one I've never had any issue with, you know, that's a, that's a blatant disregard for a stop work order. Any person or permitted project who has issued it, or posted a stop work order, and continues to perform additional work other than corrective measures, shall be subject to a fine up to five hundred dollars, that didn't change, and that's fine as well.
Those are the known changes that I can recall, and Lord knows y'all worked hard on.
I will have to say that, uh, section one oh five is, uh, the most contentious to me. Uh, section one oh five permits required versus not required. Um, I appreciate you, uh, taking into consideration additional verbiage, so that we can clarify, uh, that you do want to have permitting for storage buildings, uh, for, I mean, I believe it was expressly stated for, you know, the requirements of setbacks. However, the, the striking of item number ten, which is the decks, which I don't have the original verbiage, I probably do have the original verbiage. But, um, you know, decks less than thirty inches, uh, freestanding, not serving, all.
I can read directly to that if you can.
Sure, yeah, go ahead and read that, go ahead and read the original.
Item ten, so these would be permits should not be required, decks not exceeding two hundred square feet in an area that are not more than thirty inches above grade at any point, and are not attached to a dwelling, and do not serve exit door required by section R three eleven dot four.
That was in the original?
That was the original, and what's been proposed by the committee is to strike that in its entirety, and so do And so duly, all decks regardless of size would have to be permitted.
And I think that's an interesting setback at this point. I honestly couldn't vote for that to approve it in that language, so I, we don't vote on it.
Is there a reason why we were okay with it before, but we're not now? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it was always proposed, they'd always said that, as I recall, the committee comments were always going to be that any permit, any deck would have to be.
To require it?
Right. If you remember, where was, where did that originate from? These were the options that were given to you by the IBC, the International Building Committee.
So really, the items.
One thing was a six month of grand, and he calls up a 22 inch deck, and questions that in rock, do what you do.
And you have homeowner insurance, which should have rails.
It's above 30 that requires rails, we all know that, right? You understand that, correct?
I said 22 inches.
Oh, 30 for the IBC. Obviously, you know, with the understanding that those rails, you can't pass a four inch spear, if I'm not mistaken. That's the other safety requirement for that, but this is, this is specifically for decks that are 30 inches or less off the ground, which don't require rails at all, no matter where you put them, and this is a freestanding deck, not serving or attached to a house. I can understand what Gene's comment was, you have 100 people on a deck, and I've seen that happen before. You've got a deck on a second story where someone didn't monitor or maintain the anchoring of the deck to the house where it just falls straight into the second floor. This isn't one of those situations. This is not attached to a house. Shortcuts for a deck in the middle of the yard. I recommend that this isn't ready for passage, I think that, you know, I concede it with you guys on item number one, which is storage buildings, and, but you're not willing to move on the deck. The other thing about the fines, the state of Georgia requires a maximum, well, doesn't require a maximum, but limits the maximum for, oh, is it, you know, municipal court, I forget what they call that violation, is $1,000, which I think, you know, we were originally, with your $500 fill in the blank, that was approaching that amount to exceed 1,000, which would have been limited by the state of Georgia. The 250 doesn't really do much, so honestly, with that, not a big concern to me. So here, my big concerns were item 105, items number one regarding storage shelters, and then item number 10, the decks. I concede it with you on item number one, but I don't see, I don't see anything give back on that item number 10 on decks. I don't see the, the reason for it.
No, it doesn't have to be, just the opposite, if you adopted this, it would be that anything that's attached to a bill, to a house would have to be anchored. This is independent of that.
How many of those decks that you've seen were in the middle of the yard, not attached to a dwelling? Not very often.
Not very often, but I'm just saying, you put all the people up on that day, and people have happened to get out and go to the party and dancing and all that, that day, it's gonna come down to it, not built properly.
I just, I'll go ahead and just go on record, I, I don't believe we are babysitters as far as things in this particular instance.
All right, what am I doing, I'm passing down a road again?
Been passed down, but we're passing down again.
Is that, is that a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion by the Congressmen?
I'll second.
Okay, we lift a board discussion, second by Tony Corret. All prayers are aye?
Aye.
All pros say no?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, the proposed variance for 5561 shot with road, next one we did, am I right? Am I covered again?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, this was a variance item that was tabled after the public hearing. I didn't know if we needed any further comment or if the table was solely for a decision.
I think it's, we're. Are you going to take a motion on this, on the variance?
I'll take a, I'll make a motion that for the variance request for 5561 shot with road. I'll make a motion that we approve that request.
Motion by Tony Corret to approve the question, here's chapter one, give me a second.
I'll start, ma'am.
As soon as Congressmen, all prayers are aye?
Aye.
All pros say no?
No.
Takes three votes to make it. Do not place. Am I right?
Yes.
All right, the proposed variance for the car street has been, it's been tabled, volunteered by the advocate. So I don't begin on that, is that correct?
That's correct. We have another public hearing during the 19th.
All right, any more of the Catalina residents?
Uh, so we have not gotten a response from the county. I can't wait to bring that up to them, but.
It's almost 30 days.
And again, all we need is the air, not what we need to go for, or, you know, address, right? And either way, I'll respond to the council, let them know if the county rephrases a bona fide objection. Obviously, we'll copy on that, and we can address that definition.
Okay. Conference has a plan, didn't you?
So that'd be a work session for this Thursday at 5:00 p.m., and that'll be presented by Jordan Matt. I should have the draft document for y'all to, I was gonna say admire, I will say admire, for y'all to look at. So you should get that in the email tomorrow.
Will that be here?
Yes.
Now, Halk County control agreement.
So I haven't gotten any more comment from, you know, just to remind the council, you have a current agreement with them, as they adopt, and suggest that for the same level of service has to be changed local level. So that service is provided by Halk County, and I'm in control with city Gainesville, Flower Branch, Oakwood, and of course, Lula. So that being said, I'm anxious to hear if there's gonna be any other comments. You know, we went over the highlights of those, and I can do that again tonight if you'd like.
We, we actually think I agree to that?
We would have to if you want to continue that level of service, is that right, Joey?
Yes, yes, but I.
I thought it was pretty strong, right?
Well, and those are some matters that you still need to adopt your ordinance.
Right.
So, I was like Dennis, I had thought maybe you would hear something back from the county. But we'll just proceed with the drafting of your ordinance, and I'll have that for you for your June meetings. Do you want public hearings on that, as a mayor of the council?
Just let me remind everybody what the new ordinance would be. Community cat program for a cat colony provides for exemptions for registration. Restrictions on sales of dogs and cats prohibits pet shops and retail from selling cats and dogs. Allow pet shops provide space for adoptable cats and dogs for rescue organizations and out of patrol facilities. Prohibits roadside sales, private citizen from selling or giving away cats, dogs, or domestic rabbits in public place. Violation to each failure of, failure to post appropriate signs of adoptable animals in each individual sale violating the sales restriction will continue. A separate offense of limitation of potentially dangerous and dangerous animal or vicious animal part of property enclosure of animals classified as such be construed at least one mile away from a school, church, or daycare, and prohibit stealing, loaning, housing, or controlling such animals. That being said, this is probably close to 80-plus pages long.
That would be, to, to comply with those would mean that we would have to modify our existing ordinance, is that what we're suspecting?
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was not that long ago.
But is it something that we have to do in order to continue animal control to Halk County? Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's our agreement, but there were some comments made when it was brought up at the work session that some of these would, may be impossible for the city to enforce. So that being the case, I'll, I'll go ahead and get you all the ordinance. And I also thought Halk County may still be in the process of anchoring with their.
And that may be, just that's all the correspondence that I've got.
Does our current animal control orders say in uncertain, uncertain terms, would, that we act, comply with their ordinance?
It's the intergovernmental agreement that says that we have to adopt their ordinance in order for them to enforce our ordinance.
So you did, you didn't automatically, when they do it, we do it?
No, no, we still have to adopt.
Okay.
Right. So I, I would hold off adopting it, let us confirm what they.
We're not asking for a vote, see, we're surprised there hasn't been any communication. I, I'll remind everybody, I think I got this a week ago Friday, and had been told it was coming for the last two weeks, so I don't think it's ready to see the light of day yet.
Okay, Wednesday by 24th, the latest meeting for lunch, and dinner at Depot, uh, noon for dinner, lunch, and 6:30 for dinner. This office side, Mr. Ford's money of the month, 7:00 p.m. at the Depot. All right, text Mike, everybody should already sign up for this by the end, it's the way we want to notify you of any emergency questions in the city. And you have to just take the word of law, and 91896, work it really good. And on Memorial Day, it's two weeks into the day, 10:00 mark, you're in a front, the historic site, and bringing it, and expect a big crowd. So we age, all right, back to the comments again.
Do you actually want that to be a speech?
Uh, it was something about the meeting yet.
You did earlier.
I've always been, I guess we'll go to county comments then. Was, I asked, since comments.
Yeah, I had a question about the, the conduct thing. I know it says that, um, we can address y'all and you send us in the right direction. I did send an email, the only response I got was from Dennis. No other. So if, if you're not gonna answer our email, then where do we go with that? And I know this is probably something you can't handle, but, you know, I'm just trying to address a problem I'm having in the city with, without any resolution.
Are, which, which item are you referring to? Is it an email regarding mail?
Yes, because I can no longer get my mail since I filed against the mayor with the recall.
The reason when you do a bulk email, when we all comment, that creates form. And we can't comment when you address all of us in one email. Because we have not publicized that we're having a meeting, and that puts us into a place to where we're having a meeting on email that is not public for everyone to see.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So the instruction then for everyone.
I can talk with you individually, not email, but when you bulk email us, that's why we allow Dennis to respond, and the rest of us does not respond. That way, we're not breaking the law. So a lot of what y'all are asking us to do, it goes against the laws and the regulations that we have to abide by.
All right.
Is that correct, Joey?
Yes.
So what we need to do, I'm sorry?
Are you asking the mayor?
Well, I've sent the email out in general, because since I spoke out about the recall and did the application, I, and I can tell you all without, I mean, I know this probably goes against, I sent eight letters from the Limestone Parkway mail. Seven of those letters were to my business, one of those letters was to Randy and Erica Martin next door to my business. She received hers within four days, I haven't received any of mine, two have been returned as undeliverable. To me, that seems like I'm being harassed for speaking out because I didn't agree with the mayor. So I'm just wanting to know, you know, I know that you can't control the mail, Dennis explained that to me, but my problem is, as a citizen, I should get some resolve. I'm not getting any resolve from the postmaster, I know that you don't control the mail, but I just thought maybe letting someone know the situation that I was going through, because I am not the only one in Lula going through that situation, that maybe it just sheds a light, that as a business owner, that I should, it should be addressed in some way and not ignored.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sending the email, and certainly we, for future reference, you can.
Each individual, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm sure, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out. I appreciate it all for being here and being involved in our community, and really appreciate that. I'm very thankful that you're, you're active and concerned. Couple of things that, well, you saw several voting items tonight, one of which was a request for a variance for 5561 shot with road, and you saw a, I mean, you know, one person recused themselves as required. And you saw two votes for and one vote against, and the reason that, that motion failed is because it requires a unanimous vote when it's through. So I just want to make sure that everyone understood that, and, and one of the, the concerns that I had was, and the reason for my motion would have been that the city of Lula did pass an ordinance amending additional permitted uses within the agricultural district, which was, you know, pertinent to the request. This was, I believe, it's 081521 dash B, which I think is meaning that it was approved on August 15th, 2021. And so to have denied that claim or that request would have been in violation of the ordinance that was passed, in my opinion. So I just wanted to just kind of shed light on that. If anyone wanted to ask me questions about it, feel free to, to send me an email.
Can I ask you a question now?
Council comments, council comments.
He's in meeting. Sure.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. That's a lot more than that. There seems to be sides going on in the city. And I, I can tell you that I'm not on a side. I agree with stuff on both sides. I agree with stuff on both sides. So I take it as, as it comes to me, but I feel like we need to be careful how we approach what we're wanting and how we're doing, how we work, what we're wanting in our tactics and getting this resolved. I'll just say that we got an email yesterday morning, and I'll tell you, it kind of ruined my mental state, I'm just gonna be honest. It has to do with. there's accountability on every side and, um, tonight was a lot to handle, yesterday was a lot for me, I won't go into details of it, um, but we need to do better, we need to do better, everybody needs to do better. And, um, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Reason I don't really know. Not that I guess, like, 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 what else, what else? Near as yet, but people in the city, you do judge, well, listen to what they are saying. I'd like to thank everyone for coming down, but I think tonight was a shame and a disgrace on the city of Lula for the way that the mayor put a chokehold on the citizens' comment. I think it's wrong and if you can see what it caused, it looks like you don't, yeah. You did? You just said we didn't listen to the vote. The crowd walked out, we played it more tense. Oh, the vote is here, the one, this, this comment is gone. Well, are we gonna play, we're gonna play this here? This is council comments, we're gonna have council comments. And we wonder why the ruin or replace the disruptive meetings. It's, it's, it's strictly the disruptive meeting, it's personal attack and it's me, it's okay, I don't mind that, we can handle personal attacks. But, but interrupting is uncivil.
Tell me something that's applicable a little bit.
These are the same roads that were placed four years ago. Okay, I want to thank y'all for coming, I hope to do it again, we'll be peaceful and respectful and I do listen, sometimes acknowledge listening too, but I do listen, yeah, I don't always respond, kind of my first response and not the correct response. Okay, I'll entertain those. May I, Jean, Jean Bratton, adjourned me. I got a second, I just gotta sit here.
I'll play it.
Oh, I got a second, you told me to go ahead, all the part of going on, say aye.
Aye.
All the votes are no. Yeah.